Okay, um. Special City Council meeting agenda. The time is 6:00 PM. Notice this hereby given that the above called meeting of the governing body of the city of Balcony Heights, Texas will be held on Monday, September 8th, 2025 at 6:00 PM in the Justice Center located at 3300 Hillcrest Drive, Balcony Heights, Texas, 78201 to consider and act upon any lawful subject which may come before said meeting, including, among others, the following items to be discussed and acted upon. We will now call the order and recording of a quorum, which we do have, two, three, and Mr. Hernandez is on video, so we do have a quorum, invocation and pledges of allegiance to the USA and Texas flag here, and then we need to go ahead and complete that. So Ms. Weaver, Councilwoman Weaver, will take that role.
Oh Heavenly Father, we are gathered here today to form judgments and make decisions that will affect the lives of those committed to our charge. Please give us wisdom and understanding. Guide our decisions, may they be fair, just, and merciful. Amen.
Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas bank. I pledge allegiance to thee, one nation under God, one God.
And indivisible. Okay, so now we have public comment period. Staff, do we have any public comment period? Anybody filled out any registration for citizens to be heard? Any specific agenda item?
No, sir.
Okay. All right, I'll read it just for the public record because it's required. Public comment period. At this time, citizens who have filled out a registration form prior to the start of the meeting may speak on any topic they wish to bring to the attention of the governing bodies, so long as the topic is not on the agenda for this meeting. During the citizens to be heard section, no council action may take place and no council discussion or response is required to the speaker. Citizens who wish to speak on a specific agenda item when that item is called for discussion must first fill out a registration form prior to the start of the meeting indicating which agenda item they wish to address. And as the record reflects from staff, we have no one that has signed up. We don't have any presentations, to my knowledge, Mr. Martinez? Nope. So we will now move into any consent agenda items, which we do not have any of. And so strictly, this meeting is for a budget workshop number four. Mr. Messick, you have the floor.
Well, good evening, everyone, and welcome to our fourth and final budget workshop for the summer for FY 2026 budget. The next time we get together, assuming no changes or other special meetings, we'll meet together again on September 22nd, regular council meeting to approve the tax rate in this year's budget. Okay, so quite a lot has happened since the last time involving personnel changes for the most part. I've only got 16 slides to walk through real fast to get you up to speed on what's happened, so this should go pretty quickly, guys. As you see by the summary, we, since we met last, we have added two police positions, and that would be one Assistant Police Chief, Chief Robert Gomes, one Executive Assistant to the Police Chief, Mr. Andrew Lundquist, one Administrative Assistant, Mr. Rodolfo Enriquez. The city did terminate the employment of two fire department captains, Brad Tullender and Larry Schultz, and one Fire Department Lieutenant did resign, and that was Lieutenant Joe Gloria. So our personnel, total personnel stays at 58. We'll look at that here in a second.
Mr. Messick, if I may interrupt. On the third lieutenant position, I think it was, correct? Or, I'm sorry, Captain, was it Captain Rosas?
No, sir, it was Captain Tullender and Captain Schultz, and then Lieutenant Joe Gloria resigned.
Lieutenant Gloria. I just want to make sure you emphasize the fact that he resigned after he came back from his FMLA leave. No one terminated him.
Absolutely. And so the result of all of this is, well, we actually have some freezes as well with the termination of the Community Relations Manager, Community Development Manager, the Finance Administrative Clerk, and a Police Lieutenant. We also recognized nearly $400,000 in positions that are frozen as of now. Now, whether they're frozen next year or not, but for this year, anyway, we do reflect the savings.
Positions are not frozen, they're eliminated. So they will be moved over to the General Operating Fund, and as the new city administrator deems fit, those positions will either be opened up, reclassified, or whatever it may be, but those positions, as we discussed, will be moved and not in a frozen position, they're eliminated.
Are you referring, sir, to the?
Excuse me?
Are you referring to the Fire Department position?
Fire Department and to the Community Development and the, what was the other position, Ms. Mardines?
Yeah, Community Relations, Community Development, Finance Administrative.
That way, this allows that money to be loosened up.
Right.
Placed into the General Operating Fund for other needs that the city may have at the time.
Very well.
So to correct you, they're not frozen, they're eliminated. And to the General Operating Budget.
Yes, sir. And so that's an additional nearly $400,000 of savings with that. As far as the additions and subtractions prior to, it's pretty much a wash. But numbers do change, and so we'll run you through it real fast on the personnel costs. So personnel costs down a little bit, down to $5.231 million. We were just at $5.3 million, I believe, the last time we came together. So again, budget payroll decreased $208,000 from '24 to '25, $146,000 from this year to next year, so a pretty good $350,000 savings for us. So with the changes, with the additions on the police side, with the split that we had in place, 55-45, the crime control was balanced prior to. To balance it out, again, I had to reduce the percentage down to 60-40, so now 60% of all police personnel costs are in the General Fund and 40% are in your crime control district. But still, it's balanced, it's a balanced fund still. On the General Fund side, the numbers changed, but we're still dealing with a balanced budget. Of course, your General Fund is your most important fund, it's where you get two-thirds of your budget revenues going into. That balanced number is just under $5.7 million, revenues equal expenses. We still have the three months of reserves, and we still have the $200,000 of contingency as we had in the previous budget before this meeting. And that's important because we're working our way towards the Hillcrest Drive project, which we're nearly at 90% complete with tax dot, which means, in theory, we could actually start looking at budgeting for this at the end of this year. And so this is coming up pretty quick, but the whole idea was to get us to that $400,000 number there on the right up towards the top, first payment of $400,000. That would be for a $5 million bond over a 20-year repayment, and so we need to come up with $400,000. And so how we're doing that is by growing the contingency that we have in our General Fund. Last year, we started out with $125,000. This year, the Vivian tax note falls out, that's roughly $75,000 more added to it. That's the $200,000 contingency we have going into next year. In FY '26, we pay off the fire truck, and that's $116,000. That goes into the contingency for '27, and that's about $320,000 that we have trying to make that magic number of 400,000. So we'll be in pretty good shape for it. We've been walking it up all these years to get to that point, and we're looking pretty good with it. FY '27 revenues required. Again, what I wanted to show here was how our tax rate is affected by this debt in this year or in the FY '26 budget. Our INS or our debt portions that we're paying back is $116,000, and that's our last fire department or a fire truck payment, paying off that loan. But as you can see, there's $116,000, that's not much on the INS side, that's like three cents of your tax rate, that's not very much. The bulk of your money, 57 cents of it, or $2 million is going into your General Fund, right? But next year, that debt goes up to 400,000, the INS rate goes up to 11 cents from 3 cents. The amount going into the General Fund now goes down to $1.7 million. So if one goes up, the other goes down, right? And so how do we make up that nearly $400,000 difference? Well, that's in the contingency. So that's why we're building that contingency so that we can eliminate it in '27, so that we can have it for the debt and still make our requirements in the General Fund. Questions? Just to throw up the capital fund, there's no changes to it. Originally, we had two police vehicles on there. You requested that we take that off, and we did. So we're still with our two street projects, Crestview Phase Two for $673,000 and a little bit there for Hillcrest, $20,000 for fire station renovations. And so the capital fund is running a deficit this year. As you know, some years it's a surplus, some years it's a deficit. It's a pretty good deficit this year of $542,000, and that contributes to the overall budget deficit. But keep in mind, that fluctuates, so it'll be good and bad over the years. Mr. Burton?
Where does Crestview Phase Three play into this?
Yeah, after Crestview Phase Two, so Crestview Phase Three would be in next year's capital budget. And Crestview Phase Two should start off ideally this fall, so.
Mr. Messick?
Sir?
It's Jimmy. Hey, I know that we had previously corresponded about when we were going to remove one vehicle, and we were going to reallocate that 60,000 towards cameras and lights. Is that, has that been reallocated or earmarked for that? And then what happened to the other 60,000 with that second vehicle?
Yes, sir. So right now, the last I heard as the consensus from council was to remove the vehicles so that money goes back into the capital fund. At the last meeting, nobody brought forth the issue of the cameras, and so I'm just waiting input.
Yeah, I want to allocate that 60,000 that we originally spoke about for the cameras and lighting, and then we will let the new chief, Cavassos, determine, you know, how those dollars are going to be spent or where they're best going to be spent at. And I've previously met with Mr. Cavassos about that, so that, you know, anyway, I think we need to earmark that.
Any comments, Chief Cavassos?
Yes, Mr. Hernandez, we met on that, and you and I will go over the locations there and see where those cameras will best be suited and what light opportunities we have.
Thank you.
Mr. Messick, going back on the summary of changes, I think you don't reflect one lieutenant position, actually, two lieutenant positions that are no longer built.
Yes, sir. It's in that $400,000 number savings, but yes, I did not mention that. There was one.
You didn't mention it?
Yes, sir, that is correct. There was one lieutenant position as well. Yes, sir. And as far as this item goes, typically, I would just query council to see if they're okay with that, Mr. Hernandez, and if that's the direction they wish to go, then I can make that change and have that 60,000 in the capital fund the next time we present.
Counsel, you feel all right with that as the fact that Chief Cavassos has concurred, and it's okay that they'll get together and work on where those funds will be distributed? Okay, Ms. Weaver, you okay with that? Okay?
Thank you.
All right, Mr. Floyd, you have your directions?
Yes, sir.
So Chief, are there any other positions that you want to mention other than the summary of changes? So there's two police positions that were added. Any other thing that you want to add to that?
Well, we recently had a resignation in another lieutenant spot, so that's another open lieutenant's position. The previous lieutenant's position that was previously frozen is still going to remain frozen until later on if we determine that if the department expands any further. At this point, that position is not.
Okay. All right, Mr. Messick, go ahead and continue, sir.
So we're saying total budget deficit as it appears today, $830,000. Of course, I would direct your attention to the top, your General Fund, most important, is balanced and very healthy. Some of these other funds go up and down. The capital fund, obviously, is a big chunk of that deficit that you see for this year. But your real deficit from year to year is going to be your Economic Development Corporation, that $437,000 is going to carry forward every year. That's your ongoing concerns, and you guys are being very aggressive about addressing that. But you can imagine next year what the budget might look like with the capital fund receiving $5 million in it. Next year, you might be looking at this and showing a $4 million surplus overall on the budget.
That would be beautiful.
That doesn't mean you have 4 million, of course. It just means that it's there. It reflects in the overall budget's bottom line, but it's been fenced off or something, and the same for this deficit here. Sorry, Mr. Hernandez, did you have something?
Oh, I said that would be beautiful.
Yes, sir. I just got to hit the tax rates again here real fast, no change. Your taxable value is the prais'd value that the county sets for all the city's property. Your tax rate is made up of two components, INS, MNO. INS is your debt service portion that pays for debt, MNO is the portion that goes into the city's general fund.
So just for the record on the definitions.
Yes, sir.
Of this particular tax rate, and for the clarification of the citizens that may be listening to this broadcast, we did not raise the tax at all. The council elected to stay at the same tax rate, the 0.604 of the 100 evaluation, which is the same as last year, which could have a savings for the average homeowner.
Yes, sir.
Okay, great. Good job, council.
Your historic values are down about $5 million from last year, there were 360 million. This is typically going to follow the economy, as the economy goes, most of the time so go the evaluations. You also have to consider the aging of the business infrastructure and things like that, but the primary driver is going to be the economy. And so next year, what's the economy going to do? I mean, who knows? Hopefully, it'll take off, and we'll see these valuations go up. If not, it goes down, and that's a new problem that we have, especially trying to reach that $400,000 debt payment. But for now, it is what it is, 355,000, and that's a decrease of about 1.4% over last year. Your total valuation is made up of pretty much three categories here. You have your commercial, your multifamily, and your residential. Obviously, the commercial, we're a heavy retail city, and so that's where most of your, yeah, the ad valorem taxes are going to come from, 67%. 247 million of the 355 million comes from commercial property valuations, and that's down just slightly. Statistically, it's the same as last year, but it's down a little bit, okay? Your multifamily valuation has decreased the most over, what, 10%? I mean, that's a pretty steep drop-off. It dropped $9 million from last year, and that totals up to $80 million. Your single-family residential valuations increased $1 million, that's about 25%, so that's pretty good. And total for family residency is $40 million. Any questions on that, Mr. Sellers? Again, I would speculate that there's probably not been a lot of improvements to it, as typically these valuations go to capture improvements, right? And so the same on the commercial side, some, but not quite a lot, but on the apartments, it's reflecting their age and lack of investment in them.
Counsel, can you repeat your question just for the record, please, with the mic on?
I wanted to know why multifamilies decreased. I'm zone multifamily in my house, that's why I was curious.
And then I have a question, Mr. Messick.
Yes, sir.
Do you think that the single-family homes, maybe the valuation may have decreased due to the extra, I'm going to say exemption, that state of Texas put in place for homesteads?
So, Mr. Hernandez, the single-family residential valuations actually went up. It was the multifamily valuations, the apartment complexes that went down.
Gotcha, thank you.
Yes, sir. On the average home, we did see a 3.8% increase from 194,000 to 202,000. The bill went up, obviously, that same amount, and so it's a $45 increase per year for the city side for the average home.
Gotcha.
We always showed a slide to show that the city itself only has about 20% leverage on the total tax bill that you pay every year. Of course, the school district sends these other entities, make up roughly the other 80% of it. Tax rate comparison, Balcony's unique city, small land-wise, but a lot of businesses, a lot of traffic, and so we're unique in our size in the sense that we offer the full suite of public safety, you know, dispatch, fire, and police, a lot of police, because we have, you know, a lot of traffic and a lot of old apartment complexes. And so our tax rate is always going to be up near the top, but hopefully not the top. But as the mayor said earlier, this is the third year that we've kept the tax rate at .604, so. There's one more slide after this, but the next time again that we meet together will be September 22nd, barring any personnel changes or any other changes to the budget, these slides will pretty much be the same. If anything changes, we'll change the slides, of course. But I did want to leave you with the final slide. Roy, if you could go to the next one, and that's with our personnel complement. So all these changes do reflect on our personnel complement. I think I got them all in there, and that's important because council passes the budget, but they also set the manning levels, or I'm sorry, the personnel levels, and so this is for you as well. What follows, and I'm not going to go into it, but you have a line item budget, and if anybody wants to ask any questions concerning that, otherwise I open it up for your questions.
So if I may, Mr. Messick?
Yes, sir.
Here's where you're going to reflect on the administration, the MNA relations to zero, the administration, finance administration is zero instead of one, the CD Director of Community Development should be to zero, not one, and then on the fire captain, you have three, there should only be one, correct?
Yes.
And then lieutenants, we should have three, three. So needed to reflect that in this.
Yeah, you'll have two lieutenants and one fire captain, yes, sir.
Okay. And then I just want to make for the record that what I would like to recommend and suggest to the city council, not now, but later, as we increase our revenues for the city, I think that the council should be looking at lowering the tax rate, the ad valorem tax rate in the future budget cycle in the next year, to maybe make that our goal, is instead of going or just staying at that tax rate, let's see if we can lower it. As we're the second highest tax rate comparison from all the cities. If you can see, Summer says it's 71 cents, Balcony's Heights is right behind it at 60 cents, Kirby's at 57, San Antonio is 54, lower than us, Castle Hills is 54, Universal City is 51 cents, Alamos Park is 50 cents, Church is 49 cents, Leon Valley is 48 cents, Hollywood Park is 46 cents, Windcrest is 39 cents, Live Oak is 37, Alamo Heights is 37, Taral Hills is 35, Chavano Park is 31, The Lotus is 31, Berks Ranch is 28 cents, Hill Country Village is 0.145. So as you can see, we can probably get to a lower level as we increase our revenue source in the Economic Development Section. So as we decrease expenditures, it will loosen up money to give relief to the taxpayer of the community, so they don't have to pay such higher tax brackets, and we have the sales tax and increase in income that will offset that and some of the ad valorem tax off of the new businesses that we're proposing bringing into the city, which is what we promised our citizens we would do. So I think that would be a challenge for all of us to consider and to see if we can possibly consider in the next tax cycle in 2026 to bring down the tax rate to a lower standard, and that's all I recommend for you in terms of that, as a challenge to the council.
I have a question, I'm sorry.
I have a question, and I'm going to back up a little bit. I knew this before, but want to write it down this time. When is Crestview construction going to start again?
For Phase Two, we're looking to kick off engineering and all that stuff in the fall, so possibly at the end of this calendar year, but I believe it's in the spring. That's for Two, that's for Crestview Two. Yes, sir. It would start fall of this year for Crestview Two.
All of this year?
Yes, sir.
All right, thank you.
And I have a question for Chief Cavassos. On the personnel here, do we still have one lieutenant or this last lieutenant that resigned was the last one we had?
Yes, sir, the last lieutenant that resigned was the last one we had.
So should we reflect that going forward? Or is that something you think you're going to bring another lieutenant in?
Currently, I'm not going to bring another lieutenant in, but as things progress and we start producing more and having more activity, we'll consider that further down the road, but at this time, no.
Okay, so I think Floyd should reflect that.
Mr. Hernandez, if I might, just for, that second lieutenant position was converted into a lead investigator position, and so as I see it, there's only one lieutenant position, and it was recently terminated.
Correct.
Yes, sir.
Hernandez, if you're not done, forgive me for interrupting. Go right ahead. Mr. Hernandez?
Oh, well, okay, now that the last lieutenant has resigned, and we don't really see anybody moving into that slot this in the near future, I think maybe we should reflect that back to zero, because my understanding, the current collective bargaining agreement does not call for lieutenant position.
Lieutenant positions are addressed in the CBA, sir, but that doesn't mean you can't change the levels of them.
Well, I would say, based on whatever Chief Cavassos recommends, we'll go with that. It's his department.
Right.
Oh, yes, the collective bargaining agreement does reflect lieutenants, but I'm restructuring, so if you'll just give me the latitude of restructuring and organization at this time.
Which position, Mr. Messick, were you referring to just now? That a new position was created? What was the name of that position?
It was created a few months back, Mayor, and it's lead investigator. And what we did is during the last reconstruction from the previous administrator, Mr. Jocelyn, and former police chief Johanara, is that we got rid of all the corporal positions, and we converted a lot of those down to officers to save money. With the lieutenant's position, we took one of them, and we lowered that salary down and called it lead investigator. And so the whole thing was designed to restructure and put patrol officers back out on the street to make the department not so top-heavy, make it more like a triangle, and to save the city money in creating that position, which would normally have been a lieutenant as the lead investigator, so a lesser salary and a different title.
When, do you remember recall the month when that occurred?
Okay, so this goes way back to Mr. Porellis, that got the ball rolling, and then Mr. Jocelyn ran with it as well, and with the police chief and myself, on how we can restructure things so that the police department wasn't so top-heavy, where we didn't have all these lieutenants and sergeants and corporals and just a few officers out on the street. And so we flipped that and into the process, saved some money, and we came up with two new titles. One was investigative. One was investigator and one was lead investigator. And so instead of having, instead of paying a sergeant and calling that an investigator, we created a, a spot somewhere between a corporal and a sergeant and called that the investigator. And the lead investigator was somewhere between a sergeant and a lieutenant, instead of a lieutenant as it, as it previously was.
I'm getting a little mixed message here. You said you're going forest back as Mr. Peralas. But I asked you the question as to when was it done? What month? When it actually was initiated? And who were the parties that were involved?
Yeah, so.
What authority was this done?
It was in the spring before Mr. Jocelyn left and obviously before Chief. I'm thinking March, yeah, March, April.
My, my recollection is that Andy Jocelyn completed this either late April or early May. That's my memory of it.
Yeah.
And did you check in the collective bargaining agreement to see if this was a legitimate, authorized through the collective bargain agreement language in the contract?
Yeah, the view at the time was that, yes, the management retains the right to restructure as necessary. But we knew that when it, when the CBA reopened again, that that would have to be addressed because we were adding new titles. But of course, we have a new police chief now and all that.
Know what we have now.
Yeah.
But I'm trying to clarify this point now, and I think I have a reasoning behind why I'm asking these poignant questions. When it occurred, was Chief Janahara on leave at the time?
I don't believe so. I mean, I worked with him and Mr. Jocelyn on this.
So when that position was created, was it created through correspondence to memorize that particular action? And were you involved in that action?
I was not involved in that. Mr. Jocelyn said that he would take care of that with council and.
Say.
I didn't know.
Approved by Mr. Floyd Messick or anything?
No, no.
So the signatories or the authorization you're telling me would be Mr. Jocelyn?
Mayor, I don't know of any signatories. All I was told is that it had been cleared through council and that they were on board with it, and so we proceeded.
Remembered it.
I guess Mr. Hernandez remembered it, I guess.
I remember it happened right around the election, so I don't know if it was right before or right after.
You have any correspondence on that, chief? Anything of that nature?
I don't have any correspondence that reflects the conversation or the intent of what they were doing. I do have one piece of paper that indicates a promotional process. But there, I don't have anything that says that there was a form of a, of a membership interview. There was no selection process that was done. What I have is three individuals that signed a paper, two being the same, one being the acting chief, one being the lieutenant, which are both wanting the same. And then Mr. Messick being the finance director.
He just said he didn't remember, he didn't sign it for that change.
I sent him an email. That's what it is.
No, no. I have an actual paper that you signed. And then, of course, the officer in question.
So after reviewing that, I was under the impression that, one, you don't have the authority to do that, Mr. Messick, to sign any documents such as an administrative change within a department. When there's a lateral change like that, those are pervy between the chief of police and the city administrator. In lieu of one of the absence of the other, you don't have that authority. So you would not have no signatory authority on any documents and that would not be.
Agreed. And that's why I'm curious to see what exactly I signed, but I can.
A promotional. That's why I was caught by surprise.
On the promotional side.
You know, the change.
Yes, yes.
Of a lead investigator creating that position.
Yes. Mr. Jocelyn authorized that and, and as he walked out the door, I believe.
We'll address that. We're going to have to address that. I don't think that was a, a correct procedure to be done. And it should not have been created that way.
Well, the payroll change form is what you're referring. Okay, I got you.
Yeah, now we have to pay it and we've been paying it. But that's not something that was legally done. I don't think should have been done procedurally right. So we'll have to address that and deal with that in the next few days. Anything else, Mr. Messick?
It's open for questions, Mayor and Council.
Okay. I'd like to get right in it real quick and recommend to council, after reviewing the budget, this is what I would recommend as the mayor of the city or the council. You have not mentioned anything about COLA raises. You have that in this budget.
Yes, sir. That hasn't changed.
Us authorizing it, you just automatically did it.
Mayor.
You gave yourself a 2.5 increase or 2.7?
Mayor, you, you guys approved the budget. It is embedded in the budget. It has not changed. It's always been estimated at 2.4 based on the estimates from social security. So you guys vote on that as well.
But if I had not said anything, you would have probably told us because it's not in the budget here. Not written anywhere here.
Yeah, your little faith, sir. It's been briefed every budget.
Please allow me to.
Workshop.
Messick, you didn't put anything in here that stipulates 2.4 COLA increase at all. So if we would have not asked, we caught it, said anything about it, then it would have just gone through without council's knowledge. So my recommendation is that I would recommend to the council to not provide any 2.4 COLA raises at all in this budget. I would also recommend that we remove any automatic pay increases that have been implemented in the past. I would also recommend that the budget for improvement to the main city park, which I think some of our council members are going to talk about tonight with the money that we've saved so far and other stuff. And I'd like to talk about modifying the sick leave policy to not allow for the accumulation and abundance of 200 hours plus or days. Modify the vacation day policy to not allow excessive amounts that currently exist other than what's mandated by law for the fire and police, which is 1,080 hours accumulation. Sick leave, correct?
1,080 is just for the fire department.
Yeah, fire department and police, if I'm not mistaken.
No, sir. There's 720 for the police.
Okay, so 720 for police. And so those will remain 1,080 stipulated by law. And I like to recommend that the council do not do any increases in the legal fee budget as well. And I think these would bring significant savings to the city. So the first one, let's take on, how does council feel about the 2.4 COLA raises? To not allow those this year to give the city, not only to alleviate the budget deficit, but also to loosen up funds for other things that we're going to be needing in the future. For example, legal fees that we're going to have to possibly be looking at in the Wonderland of the Americas. We're going to be having a meeting with those partners of ours and we're anticipating there may be a legal challenge. If it is, we've got to be ready to have those funds available. We also need park lights that we need to put up in the city parks. Other needs that the city has, I want to loosen, recommend to the council, we loosen those purse strings on these recommended savings so that we can provide more services to the community in terms of better lights for their, their parks, better lights for the neighborhood and possibly, you know, those walking trails and biking trails in the future. For now, those are the two most pressing I see that I would recommend. But it's not just about alleviating the budget deficit. It's to loosen up some money so we can put it elsewhere for use of the citizen services. So let's take the first COLA raises. What's that?
With the collective bargaining agreement, you can do whatever you want with staff.
Oh, we know that.
But the, but the police get their COLA and they get their steps as well.
Negotiators will be negotiating with the collective bargaining when that comes time. That'll be a separate issue, totally different from what we're doing here. What I'm referring to is a 2.4 for anybody but collective bargaining employees. Do I have any comments from any council members that concur with that? For example, Mr. Messick will probably be receiving a raise of about $11,000 with salary with a 2.4 COLA raise, roughly. Give us a figure, Mr. Somebody told me that. I'm not sure.
2.4 or $100 is $2.04, 200, so $2,000 maybe.
Per year?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
And it's not a raise, Mayor, again, it's a cost of living adjustment.
An increase.
But it's been said that it's a raise.
But it's optional. We don't have to do it to save.
Of course not.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay. Would everybody concur that that would be a good move to do?
But it is required for the CBA.
That is correct. We don't touch that. Okay, so Mr. Messick, I don't hear anybody that does not concur with that. Remove the 2.5 COLA raises from the budget.
2.4.
2.4, please. For this year until we can get straightened out. Remove the automatic pay increases as well. Anybody have any comments referring to that suggestion and recommendation?
Yeah.
Yes.
No, no, no. There's an evaluation done on every person that is coming up for a step.
We haven't had.
It's not automatic. No, ma'am. There's been plenty of people that did not get it, that did not get their step until they, you know, moved up to requirements.
Yeah. I still get, I get, I get really not insecure when you start talking about all these raises and all these, you know.
And it's not every year, ma'am. For the first four years, there is a COLA and then it starts skipping years. And so over a 19-year period, 20-year period, you'll get 10 steps total. And each step is, is 2%. And again, that helps keep up with inflation and whatnot. That and COLAs.
You know, I'd like for you to work on, I'd like for you to just work on it, not, maybe not implement it or anything. But they did away with our sick leave. We don't have sick leave. They combined the holidays and the vacations days and they call that our pay time off. And if we get sick, we are allowed to use our PTO, which is our pay time off, up to seven days. After that, we have to go short-term disability or long-term disability and they charge us for that. So is there any way that you could look into that to see whether or not it would be applicable to this area?
I don't believe it would be with other cities, but I mean, we can look at PTO, yes.
I mean, would you, could you look at that?
But that's separate from.
A lot of money. I mean, we wouldn't have all this sick leave and vacation time and holiday time. I mean, the vacation time's not included with the holidays, I'm sure. See, and ours are.
Correct.
You know, and I've been there for 50 years and I don't get that much time, trust me. I think my max is, for, for me is 280 hours vacation. That's it. They give that to me every year. So whether I use it or not, if I lose, if I don't use it, I lose it. So, you know. And that's with a big corporation. So maybe that's the difference between the way we do things and the way, you know, the city does things. But I think it would save us a lot of money. You know, that we wouldn't have this accumulation and, and.
In other words, no pay increases until we can get settled out. Yes, Mr. Burden, go right ahead.
We're, we're not talking about the step increases. We're talking about.
That's exactly what the mayor is talking about. Yes, sir.
Okay.
It was just a thought.
Okay. So unless anybody has any comments for that, I would say we save money there as well for the citizens. Everyone concur?
Mr. Messick, I have a question for you. You mentioned that, you know, out of a 19 or 20-year period, 10 of those would have the COLA adjustments. Can you do some, I'm going to say historical data for our, our city of Balcony Heights to see, you know, by year, what those cost of living adjustments were each year? Let's, you know, let's go back the last 19 years, as you suggested, and, and see which years we had them, which years we didn't. And I think that, that information would be very valuable. I, I'm of the opinion that, you know, if we've had a lot of, I'm going to say cost of living adjustments, especially, you know, several years in a row, then I'm in agreement with this year not, not having a COLA adjustment because we are trying to come up with funds to cover these other ones. But if I do see a consistent pattern where, you know, you, you guys already are skipping some, then, you know, I'm more inclined to, to approve it. But I'd like to see the data on that.
So, Mr. Hernandez, we're, we're talking two separate things. We're talking steps and a cost of living adjustment, right? And so the cost of living adjustment recently, in recent years, has been based on what social security says that their number is in November. And that was tied to the collective bargaining agreement for the cops. Prior to that, we, council would take into consideration what the cost of living amount was for the southern region and decide whether they wanted to give that full amount or some partial amount. And some years you would get the full amount, some, some years nothing, some years some of it and so forth and so on. But the steps are incorporated into the, into the pay scale. So our pay scale starts out low and then we have these steps, 10 steps over a 20-year period to up those. And so between that and the COLA, that was kind of the plan or the, the method of keeping those salaries at market.
Oh, I get.
If that helps.
And take in mind, Mr. Hernandez, this was done when the city was flush with money, when they were getting the red light camera revenues. When we lost that 400,000, close to 500,000 revenue, plus bleeding out 100,000, $500 every three months with no revenue coming in from the WODA and having to pay that interest only has been extra. It's an extra burden on the city. So this year would be the year to be able to cost savings on that COLA and any automatic pay increases that they would have just for this year alone. And it gives us a little time to breathe while we almost get this WODA, which we're almost there, getting it under control. Once we get that problem resolved, which I assume will take place in the next 90 days, if not sooner, we will be able to have a better picture of what the forecast would be for the city. So it's more of a proactive measure instead of a reactive so that we don't have to be sweating down the road as to how we're going to pay our bills. And, and this gives us a little breathing room to loosen up other funds of that savings that could go to another core delivery service.
So for clarification on the step increases, is that something that's automatic? Or how, how are those step increases awarded currently, Floyd?
Yes, everyone that's eligible for a step. And not every year will somebody be eligible, right? Because it's the first four years, then it starts skipping years, then it starts skipping every other year. And so if they're eligible for a step that year, they have to pass their evaluation. And if they pass their evaluation, they're eligible. If they don't, and, and, and there's been times when people haven't been, then they don't get the step that year or until they show the improvement. But it's 10 steps over 20 years. Yes, sir.
When was your last evaluation, Mr. Messick? I'm on year. I don't remember having any evaluation last year.
Yeah, I'm on year four and so I'm coming up on my fourth evaluation and I did get one last year.
Who conducted?
Or maybe I didn't. I don't know. No, I think I did.
Mr. Peralas didn't. I didn't see it.
Yeah, Mr. Peralas did my last one, so.
In 2024, 2023? 23?
Maybe, yeah, yeah.
Who oversees the evaluation?
What's that?
Who oversees the evaluation?
That's exactly my point.
The departments oversee it.
Nobody sees it.
That's what I was going to ask. Who evaluates these people?
The departments evaluate their own.
They, the departments devalue their own.
Yeah, police evaluate, police, fire department.
Like for the, for the, for the city, I mean, for the courthouse here, our, our employees, the people that help us with the tickets and the permits and all that.
Yes, they're evaluated by the city secretary.
The city secretary is in charge of them?
Yes, ma'am.
See, like in the police department, before our new chief came in, none of that existed. We didn't see any evaluations.
The, the employee evaluations wouldn't, well, council wouldn't see any evaluations, actually. That's for the city administrator.
We would see as unilateral.
But yes, sir. Every month I put out who's due for an evaluation and make sure that it's given.
Creation of positions that were not existing before and has led to us to be where we're at right now. We've got to get this budget under control. We can't allow it to continue the way it's been in the past. We have to get it under control. One of the hardest things to do, but once you do it, we're going to be okay. And it's not all doom and gloom, but it's proactiveness, being proactive.
It's not going to be forever either. It's just temporary till we get on our feet.
Yeah, exactly.
But it's got to get started somewhere.
The only one we oversee is, is the city administrator.
Yes, sir.
I just feel like we should be more involved in the evaluation of the employees prior to raises. But perhaps that is a city administrator's responsibility.
Yes, sir.
Well, we can give input. I don't see why not because they, they have to work with us too. And if they're not helping us, then we need to let the administrator know.
Right.
We should at least be informed.
Right.
What his decision is.
Right. I agree.
I, I delegate that to the department heads. Chief Cavassos, Chief Marquin for his departments respectively and.
Oh, then. Oh, then I don't.
The city, the city administrator for.
For here.
Right.
As, as an HR, you know.
But I think what David is saying is just overall oversight. Somebody needs to be looking out, like for example, just recently I had a request for vacation leave, for time off. It wasn't a, I want a request this time. I'm being told I'm taking off this day, this time. And I said, no, the policy manual dictates that. Well, we haven't been following, nobody does that, we didn't have forms for that. Well, you do now, because we need to oversee what the demands of each department is. And when there is a vacuum in the department, we need to know who's going to be in charge of that department, who is left in charge, and what are the things that are needing to be addressed so that the core delivery services are not interrupted for the community. And so there has to be some check and balances in our personnel operations. And so this is part of it. Once we start getting a hold of these figures and numbers, we'll be okay. So are we okay, council, to go ahead and just eliminate the COLA 2.4? I think we all said yes. And then the cost of living increases as well, until we can get better situated?
Yeah.
Okay. Yes, Mr. Burton?
Uh, in the proposed budget, where do we see those, those? I mean, are they just automatically rolled into the budget? We, I mean, you've got line items on here and you, you don't see those in, in a line item, it's just.
Or the cost of living and steps, yes, sir. So remember when I passed out the personnel, it's encoded in that. And, and so when I go in, into next year's budget, I look to see who's due a step or who's not and throw that into the budget. It's all by formula, so whatever the COLA is, I plug that number in and it calculates everything for me. Then that translates into your line item budget.
And we wouldn't have known had I not asked about it. He was already incorporated into the numbers.
So as I've said from budget workshop number one, Mayor, this budget has a 2.4. Every workshop, I've told you that that hasn't changed.
You said you were going to recommend a 2.4, but you didn't get authorization to do it yet.
No, of course, you, you guys authorize it, Mayor.
Right.
It's always been, what does social security say in November? That's what we, that's what we recommend. And because it has to be for the CBA. And so that's the number that we've been going with all year at every budget cycle. So no, I do not appreciate you saying that I'm trying to hide something when I've made it very clear to you guys all along in these budget workshops that that is incorporated into it.
Well, let me put it a little bit more clearer. Rather than you were trying to not hide something or.
Thank you.
You just failed to tell us right now that that number is incorporated into this. I was expecting it because, see, we had this conversation in the first budget hearing. And then I read to you some of the recommendations that I had concerns about. What would happen if we were to do this? What would happen if we were not to approve the 2.4 COLA? So I did give you forewarning that what I was thinking of recommending to the council, and you knew because we discussed it at that time. Though no conversation since that time to this present date right now has been made to the council in full disclosure that a 2.4 was rolled into this budget.
No, I disagree, Mayor. Council has known this from the beginning, that there is a 2.4 in this. And Mayor, if, if you didn't want it, you could have just said upfront, let's, let's take it out.
Because we have.
At the first budget workshop, we could have taken it out.
We have to take it in consideration on all these other items, Mr. Messick. So in, just as it exemplified to you, Mr. Burton, he just asked you, where is it at in this budget? Is it, well, it's incorporated, it's encoded, is the word he used, into this budget. Had we not asked, we wouldn't have known. That's my whole point. Because of the fact that I knew, but I bet my colleagues may have not known, you see? And so it's imperative that you are very clear in your communications to us and not just take it for granted of past council behavior or past council policies that they just rubber stamp it and say, go ahead and go with the COLA. You need to make sure that we all understand that there's going to be an increase in that 2.4 and it's embedded into this budget. So to clarify, maybe you weren't hiding it, is what I'm saying. But it should have been more clarified to us to be able to understand it. Okay? So now I think everybody understands the 2.5, 2.4 COLA is in there, we're not going to approve it. So if you can remove that out of the budget and any of the cost of living increases for this year.
Steps, you mean steps?
Mm-hmm.
Not cool.
Okay. And that'll save the city some money and the taxpayer some money. So any other recommendations from council that you have regarding that? Any projects you have that you would like to talk about right now? Improvements to the city park, city signs. Mr. Sellers, you had a real big concern about the parks. Is there something you want to include in the budget? Now is the time to do it, to incorporate it into the budget. With some of these savings we have with staff and stuff, we can roll over into costs of some of these things that you might want to do for the citizens in the park. And same with you, Ms. Weaver and Mr. Hernandez. Mr. Sellers, go ahead.
I would like to upgrade and add to some of the play equipment at the park.
Hey, do you have a specific figure in mind? Because that's what would be good to have, to give him an idea.
That the council should look at.
Okay. But today we have to make a decision to, to put it into the budget.
Just put it into.
So it's incorporated. You want to put 50,000, 60,000 in it, 20,000, 30? You have a rough idea, just roughly.
30.
30,000. Okay, with that, you think you can work with that and get estimates as to what you're wanting to do in improvements that would fall under that budget?
I, I could come up with some play equipment diagrams and, and pictures that.
Okay.
We can.
Within a 30 or less budget?
Down with the $30,000.
Okay.
If I might add, so you, you do have a $200,000 contingency as of now. That money carries forward, but it's also available in the budget for you to use in 2026. And so don't rush it if you, like, oh my God, we got to get our request in now. You can come back at any time as council. I, I recommend that we take a vote and buy some playground equipment. So you do have that luxury, just keep that in mind.
Mayor, what's more important at this time right now, the playground equipment or trimming those trees at the park? Because sooner or later, something's going to fall on some.
Go on, 30 grand, you can incorporate that cost in there as well.
It's 30 grand, it's probably going to cover the trimming of the trees alone.
Okay. So.
It's, it's horrible down there.
The best thing to do is get estimates, but for now, get a ballpark budget so you'll have a line item under the budget and it can be done now. Why wait till later? Just get it done now. You can amend it just as well as you could eliminate it in 26 as well.
So let's just set aside $30,000 and we'll.
Improvement.
Designate that as needed.
Improvements for the park.
And which fund would you like that to come out of?
Pardon me?
Which fund would you like for that to come out of?
Contingency fund.
Contingency is not a fund. You have capital fund, park fund, general fund.
Contingency fund is fine.
No, no, he says.
Yeah.
The capital fund or the park fund? So.
It would have to be general fund. Yeah, it would have to be part, I'm sorry, it would have to be capital or, I'd recommend general fund because you do have that $200,000 contingency.
So go with general fund then, Mr. Sellers, the safest route.
So it won't come out of general fund?
It will come out of general.
It will and it will.
Okay.
And so if we put 30,000, that'll lower your contingency to 170,000. But there'll be a line item in the, in the public works budget for 30,000.
Yeah.
Okay.
Y'all agree?
Yes.
Yes.
Think it's a good idea. If we don't do it now, David, we'll never get to it. Let's get the, the movement on it.
I'm, I'm, uh, my, my dad is incomplete so far, but I mean, we, we can bring it up in 26.
Okay.
I was on the sign.
Okay. So Mr. Burton, he had some research done on a sign for the citizens to advertise, you know, city events, activities, council meetings, birthdays of citizens in the community. Just an overall sign. Go ahead, Mr. Burton.
Uh, yeah, night, one of them on there for the demo last week was, was national light out, you know, that. And get more people, there's nobody up here for this budget meeting, to, to, to allow them to, ENZs, board of adjustments, city council meetings, pertinent information for the city, events at the mall, push them towards the mall. And I had, I had a sign company come out and they, they demoed their product. And I'm, I'm waiting on TML for their vendor list of approved vendors that they, that they've used in the past. So I've, I've got one bid, but I'm, I'm waiting on, I'd like to have, I'd like to get two more so that, that it, you know, rebid process.
What's the ballpark on those bids?
I'm sorry?
What was, what was the ballpark on those bids?
Between 40 and 50.
Well, then why don't we just allocate 50,000 now and then we can figure out the contracts later, but have it in the budget now?
Okay. So do you want this to come out of the general operating contingency or budget?
That's where it would happen.
Okay. So then you have 120 left overall from there.
And the council's okay with that with it as being an unbudgeted item?
Yes, I'm okay.
Yes.
Okay. All right, Ms. Weaver.
I'm not as big as y'all, I just want to have that, that street light taken care of. I don't know how much it's going to cost to talk to the city.
One street light or all?
No, just one, well, all of them, yeah. I want the green, I want the turn arrow to be changed to, to the yellow.
Where?
That would, especially right there on Spencer and Balcony's Road, right across from McDonald's.
That's going to be Texas Department of Public of Transportation.
Probably, yeah.
That's probably going to be their equipment. So that would not take any money, budget item?
Any money for that.
I'll only have to do.
I've been asking that since I got, since I got a look at it and nobody wants to do anything.
Okay, so we can get Nick from Community Development to get on that?
Okay.
I'll make a note to let him know.
And then there's that right there on Hillcrest, when you're coming up Hill, well, from here, it's right there at the corner. There's a blind spot like at night when you're going to take the yield to get onto Fredericksburg. There's a curb there where all those rocks are. And if you don't, if you're not looking really well, you would run over that thing. I already messed up a tire on my car and the rim and everything else.
You want me to budget you a new car?
No, 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 no.
Okay.
I just want to paint that thing, want to paint it a bright yellow, orange or something so we can see it.
Where's this at, Ms. Uh? Where's this at, Ms. Weaver?
Right here at the corner of Fredericksburg and Hillcrest.
Right there by the lubes.
Get onto Fredericksburg.
Is, is that a text dot sign?
It's just a curb.
Yeah, but it connects to Fredericksburg. I, I vaguely remember them saying that that was text dot by maybe Janet or somebody in the past, but I don't know.
We'll get, we'll get Nick on it.
Not to get too far off budget here, but the, the, the turn lanes from Hillcrest to Fredericksburg turning, you know, if you're going into the mall, the two only and the turn only and the straight one, those look like they're drawn up with pencil. They're, they're so deteriorated.
Pretty old, yes.
That, I think that's a text dot deal.
All right. Send me and I'll get with Nick. He's been real good communicating.
We're staying from the.
Have him look at the whole thing, the whole corner and, and just make sure.
Speaking to budget items, getting back to the budget. Is there anything else, Mr. Hernandez? Do you have any projects for the community to improve services for our citizens?
I, I just want to elaborate a little bit on, on that arrow where Molly's talking about. I remember right after our election, we brought that up to Andy Joslin. He actually got me in the car and we drove through there. And he said that that would be, that would not be text dot, that would be us. And he said that he didn't need any budget money, he would just make it happen. Obviously, he turned in his retirement paperwork days later, right? So I think Molly, all we need to do is get Maria, when she comes on board here in a couple of weeks, get her back on track on that.
And I'll make sure that Nick, I'll take care from our Public Works Department will take care of that. So Jimmy, do you have any projects that you are interested on behalf of the citizens that you would like to see improvements of any kind other than supporting the parks and the sign?
Well, you know, we talked about, you know, the budget, budgeting that money for cameras and lighting. So, you know, that, that we've already addressed, but that would be the project that I would, I would immediately.
Okay, so you're on board with the same as Mr. Sellers and Mr. Burton on the lighting and the, of the park and stuff?
Okay, I also have that, the, the grant that you got for the senior citizens.
The what now?
The grant that you got.
Oh, the grant, uh, for the 850.
When are we going to get that started?
That is supposed to come in sometime between November and January is what they told.
Okay, because.
They'll be allocating the funds. It's in the Congressional Appropriations Committee right now.
Okay, because we need to get that started too.
Right. I had instructed and Mr. Chief Cavazos and I have talked about that already. Mr. Martinez Roy is on board. And we took a tour of the actual facility. And as soon as the chief starts getting his storage facility in place, and once we do that on the 22nd, he can start putting the good stuff away of the evidence and anything he needs to put away. And we can relieve that room from all the stuff that's inside of it and then start working on getting it improved for the citizens.
There's a lot of craft that I want to, I want to volunteer.
Yeah. Art, craft, staring, stuff like that.
Get them started. It's even good for the kids, I mean, you know.
Okay.
It'd be multi-generation.
Well, I, I'm glad that you guys on board with trying to bring some more services to the community, reduce expenditures in a sense to where we're allocating this different money savings over to different areas where the citizens are getting taxation, representation with taxation. So that's the most important. So great, anything else?
I just want to say.
Go ahead, Mr. Sellers wanted to speak.
No, I just want to know if, are, are we going down the line here or are we asking questions about this?
If you have questions pertaining to the budget, yes.
Uh, yes. What page? It's about public safety.
Okay. Where are we?
Under my attention, a gentleman, school crossing fees, that's what brought it to my attention. Gentleman on Leisure Drive, it's where that tree fell in his backyard. A gentleman there approached me and was telling me that, that he actually witnessed a guy in a park naked and chased him across the street from my house over here and witnessed him jumping up in the back of a pickup truck naked.
Oh, that's the one that was.
And, and this is, this is 50 feet from the child getting on a school bus. A pleasant gentleman. Uh, I, I, you know, and the school crossing fees caught me. I know you used to have the police out here, right here at the corner, making sure traffic stopped for the school buses and blah, blah, blah. That, I don't see that happening anymore. But to, to protect a school crossing fees, to protect those children getting on the bus and I, I, I think we need to address that.
Did anybody address those, the, the bus stop for the children, for the covered bus stops?
Yeah, well, there's probably going to be a big issue about where they're located.
Oh. I can answer.
Yeah, Mr. Sellers, you finished?
Oh.
Okay.
Rose was supposed to find out the bus routes because they, 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 they're not always down the center of, of gentlemen's because they, they go down Leisure and up at the end. She was, she was going to get the bus routes and then we were having issues with trying to find which apartments would, would let us do that in, in the ingress or whatever.
Mm-hmm.
And then she, she got busy and, and I got sick and it's, I.
Well, how dare you?
So I, I, that, that is something that a couple of people had been requesting for some type of bus shelters.
At least, you know, for the RAM, because I see a lot of the parents with their children, you know, to take, they just let them go by themselves.
And the lady on Economics Development Corporation, Mr. Rodriguez, Rodriguez from VIA.
Uh, from VIA.
She was, she was talking about some possible stuff that they, they've, they've got off to the side that they don't use anymore that, that might help us out a little bit.
That's good.
And I haven't been to the EDC meeting lately, so I, I can bring that up with her again. But it's, it's finding the, the, the property that we can set that back off of and, and any, any homeowners that might want to.
Right, we'll help that. We, I'm sure they're going to, they're, they'll, they'll help out. But I've never seen the bus go down Leisure or anything, I just see it go straight down gentleman.
No, my, I've, I've got ones to come down my street.
Now, one of the, I have a contact, remind me, Ed VIA, that will help you with all those bus routes. Okay?
Well, these are SAISD.
No, it's the San Antonio School.
Okay. Yellow. That's Ed Garza over at the Board of Directors of that school district. Anything else on the budget? Any other questions?
I should know.
Okay, are we still gonna allocate the same amount of money we allocated for the Jazz Festival? Has anybody looked at that on the budget?
That's a good.
Attending to the hot funds? Go ahead, Jimmy.
You know, Jack and I talked about this at the Jazz Festival. And, you know, here, here's, here's what my take on it is. You know, we spent like roughly about 25,000, maybe, maybe more in some miscellaneous expenses for this event, which we have no revenue returning from us. We're, we're not able to set up vendors or do anything. All of that is done by, by, uh, David Munoz. So in other words, it's his event, he profits from it. Of course, the Crossroads Mall profits from it, or, or not Crossroads Mall, I'm sorry, WODA. But we, even though after we're investing in, we're, we're not getting any kind of return on it. And so, you know, what I'm, what I'm thinking and, 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 you know, Jack suggested it is that rather than having a jazz festival, why don't we retitle it and have a music festival? Where if we're gonna invest in it now, we can control who's managing it and we can set it up where we get a, a percentage of those revenues generated by the vendors. Uh, that's my thought on it.
Where is that, um, line item at on the budget here that you have? I didn't see it under.
It's in the hot fund, um, economic development. Fund number 20. And we have 22,000 or 22,500 set aside for the Jazz Fest and that, and $10,000 in the general fund for a total of 32,500.
Okay, help me out here, Floyd, is that, um, under the Hotel Occupancy Tax Fund?
Yes, sir, mm-hmm, fund 20.
Has 20, 25, 179,300 proposed for 25, 26, 184, 788? Correct?
I, I don't know where you're at, Mayor.
I'm at the Hotel Motel Tax Fund.
Uh, so the expense would be the one next to the bottom, 29, 39, 15 Jazz Festival.
Would you mind walking over here and just?
Yeah.
Oh, here it is. So you got 20?
22,500.
Yeah.
In this fund.
26.
Yeah, in this fund and 10,000.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
Yeah, I'm sorry, 10,000 also in the general fund.
And then you got 1,000 for promotional merchandise. So Jimmy, do you want to allocate this money for now instead of having it as a jazz festival? You want to list it as a music festival period? So that it leaves it open for interpretation of whatever the council would like to do in terms of music venue for that next year coming up?
Yeah, so if we decide to stay with the jazz, you know, it's already there. And if we decide to go a different direction, we have those funds allocated. So it's not, you know, binding us to the jazz festival. I think we should just say music festival.
So why don't we call it just a music festival on the line item, Mr. Floyd? Messick, instead of jazz festival, just to change in name, leave the money there. And then during the council deliberations, they can decide whether they, what portion of that will go to the jazz festival, if any? Uh, or what would go to the music festival?
Sure.
Okay, then we have the other one, which is the Arch and Cultural, is that the Hispanic Trails?
Hispanic Trail.
Yes, sir.
Is that it? Okay, so that's gonna stay the same, correct, guys? Uh, gentlemen?
What do we do, 2,000 on that?
We did 4,000 last year, the budget for it this year or next year would be 5,000.
Yeah, is everybody okay with that? Keep that the same, Ms. Weaver, do you know what the, the Hispanic Trails is? Okay, you okay with that?
Yes.
Okay, so that stays and remains. Any other changes or questions about budgets you'd like to see a change in? Anyone else? I think I've covered most of it, um, with the council. On the modification of the sick leave policy, we'll address that with Ms. Maria when she comes on board as to what the best course of action would be for that. And then the increase in legal fee, we don't increase it, we keep it at where we had it at, 50, was it 50,000? Instead of 80, 60? What was the increase in legal fee?
Did you guys already, uh, add in a certain amount, knowing that we're gonna anticipate some increased, uh, legal fees is coming here?
Yes. So it went from 45.5, Jimmy, to 80,000.
Okay, yeah.
Little over double, so I think we should stay at about 50,000 for now. We budgeted 46.5, so we're gonna increase it. My recommendation, go 50 to be safe. We always can move funds over with approval of the council. Anytime. So in other words, if we anticipate that, let's say halfway through the budget cycle, we're already at 40 and we're gonna have 20, so we go to the council and say, let's amend the, the budget, add the additional extra money that's required.
Or take it away.
Yeah, one of the two.
Well, if there's 80,000 in there now, I think we should just leave it.
Well, I wanted to make sure we cut it down just a little bit, put that money in the general operating budget. Because remember, we have coverage through TML for any type of lawsuits or anything that are coming up.
We're gonna incur legal expenses with WODA and that has nothing to do with TML.
Correct. What do y'all think, council? What's your input? I'm ready to and open to any suggestion, Jimmy, um, where the council, what's that? So we leave it at 80? Okay, Jack, you okay with leaving it at 80?
Yeah, that's, that's fine.
Ms. Weaver? Okay, let's leave it, let's leave it alone then.
Is the EDC attorney, is he still working for?
Free, yeah, pro bono.
Yeah.
But if we engage in any kind of legal, um, which we're anticipating possibly that, that does occur, then we've got to have some fees there available. Okay, all right, Mr. Messick. You want to reiterate what you understand is the mandate of the council now?
Got it all up here. No, um, yeah, so leave legal at 80,000. That's a problem for all of us.
Name is last words.
Right. Removing the 2.4% COLA from staff, but not from, not from the police department.
Yeah, the collective department.
We're doing a wayward steps for the staff, but not the police department. Uh, we're putting $30,000 on the public works budget line for parks. I might recommend 50,000 there because 30 sounds a little low.
You want to go with 50?
Yeah, they, they, with all the tree trimming, it's.
All right, let's go 50,000.
Yeah, and then $50,000 for the sign that comes from general fund contingency.
Doesn't mean we have to spend that.
That's correct. Uh, Jazz Fest, we're gonna leave it alone and call it Music Festival. Did I miss anything?
And you've got the living increases that we talked, step increases as well, along with the 2.4. Legal fees are gonna stay as?
80,000.
Eighty, oh, so eliminations, the cost of living and the increases.
And then you're gonna allocate 60,000 for the camera and lights?
Yeah, off of the vehicles, correct?
The vehicle.
Yeah.
Yeah. All right, good job, council.
And I don't know if you're able to, uh, label that as crime, crime prevention or where that goes, but.
Okay, you and the chief can work that out? Great. All right, um, oh, Mr. Martinez, are we gonna need a small budget for? I had talked to, in a staff meeting today, the council, I mean, to staff about making it, um, like providing snacks and all that can come out of petty fund, Mr. Messick, uh, depending upon the cost on a weekly basis for employees. Like to get maybe where they can have healthy food in the morning. Instead of them going out stopping somewhere to eat, we can have it in the break room for them, have healthy snacks, juices, things like that that they can have as a, like a benefit to their employment. Where they have, like Google does for their employments, employees, they provide, you know, time off or this and that. In this case, I want to start maybe a healthy eating program for the employees. And then, uh, possibly like Walk for Health and stuff in the community together, all of us. Where you can participate and employees can participate. Maybe later down the line, we do Top Golf, where the families can bring their kids and family and we all go as employees, compete against each other and make, like a family together. So we all start elaborating and working together. So you think we need any funds for that? Allocate or can we work out of a petty fund?
Depends on how big you want to go with the project, Mayor.
Why don't we do a little study, Floyd, see how much it would cost on an average? And, um, before we adopt the budget, correct? In the next hearing, we could slip it in if we have.
Again, there's a contingency, so if it doesn't pass it in the budget, you can come back any month afterwards.
I think the new ci- city administrator can probably pull that out of their, out of their, um, Eddie or their.
Good idea. All right, well, something to explore.
Yes.
All right, anything else? Anybody have any other questions pertaining to the budget? All right, then, uh, let's move, we're finished up, Mr. Messick, anything you want to say? Okay, time is 7:21 PM. We will now close the open session and will now go into executive session. Uh, discussion pursuant to 551.071, consultation with attorney regarding current city investigation. Um, and then we will reconvene in open session as soon as we finish that. Um, chief, you may stay with the. Okay, the time is 7:47 PM. We have now come out of executive session and we are now officially in open session. There's no action to be taken on the executive session item. Uh, we're, since we now reconvene in open session. Do we have anything from the council that needs to discuss prior to a call for adjournment? Okay?
I moved to make a motion to adjourn.
Okay, the time is again, 7:48 PM.
I second it.
We have a motion for the adjournment from Jack, uh, Councilman Jack Burton, second from Councilwoman Molly Weaver. Um, we all take the vote, Mr. Burton?
Yay.
Mr. Sellers?
Yay.
Mr. Hernandez?
It's not here yet, Molly, yay.
Okay, Ms. Weaver?
Yes.
Okay, uh, all in favor, that's three and no nays.